Could stand wherever you want. Yep. I, Rick Petfalski.
I, Rick Petfalski. Have been elected to the office of mayor.
Have been elected to the office of mayor.
For the city of Muskego.
For the city of Muskego.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of set office to the best of my ability.
The duties of set office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Okay.
And you signed it. Okay. And your permit's permanent? It's permanent?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Shelley Grogan Smith.
I, Shelley Grogan Smith.
Having been elected to the office of municipal judge.
Having been elected to the office of municipal judge.
For the city of Muskego.
For the city of Muskego.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of set office.
Discharge the duties of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Your commission expires. And it doesn't. Oh. Just take a quick picture with.
Robert Wolf.
You get it? There we go. Thank you.
Robert Wolf.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Robert J. Wolf.
I, Robert J. Wolf.
Having been elected to the office of Alderperson District 1.
Having been elected to Alderperson District 1.
For the city of Muskego.
For the city of Muskego.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of set office.
Of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Terrence.
I, John Terrence.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of Alderperson District 3.
To the office of Alderperson District 3.
For the city of Muskego.
For the city of Muskego.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of set office.
Discharge the duties of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I have another. I can give this to Justice Bradley. Can I give this to?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, John Engelhardt.
I, John Engelhardt.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of Alderperson District 5.
To the office of Alderperson District 5.
For the city of Muskego.
For the city of Muskego.
Affirm that I will support.
Affirm that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of set office.
Of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'd like to call the order of the common council meeting for April 21st, 2020. Roll call.
We'll pledge allegiance.
Oh, yes, call the order first. Oh, I'm sorry. Misread it. Screwed up my first one. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now roll call.
Alderperson's Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Terrence.
Here.
Kapusta.
Here.
Engelhardt.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
And Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice.
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
New business. Comments from Justice Bradley and Judge Iring.
Yes, Judge, I think so.
Well, good evening, everyone. I think we probably have a much smaller crowd than we normally would have for such an occasion. But I'd like to offer my congratulations to each of the newly elected officials and congratulate their families, many of whom are probably not here tonight for their own safety, but who undoubtedly played no small part in helping each of you win your elections. I'd like to sincerely thank you for answering the call to serve your communities. It is a great thing to hold yourselves out to your fellow citizens in public service. And as I can attest to, it's no small thing to run for office, whether that's locally or statewide. It takes a lot of time and dedication and no small part of intestinal fortitude. It takes courage to hold yourself out there. As you undertake your new responsibilities in these very challenging times, I want to leave you with a couple of quotes to ponder. People who know me know I am fond of quoting Sir Winston Churchill, so my quotes come from him. He said, "There is only one duty, only one safe course, and that is to try to be right and not to fear to do or say what you believe to be right." I think what he was getting at is be sure to have the courage of your convictions, whether they are grounded in your duties to your constituents, to the Constitution, for our newly elected judge, especially our duties to the law. He also said, "All the greatest things are simple, and many can be expressed in a single word: freedom, justice, honor, duty, mercy, hope." As you undertake public office, always remember to preserve our freedom, act justly and with honor, fulfill your duties for our new judge, loving your judgments with mercy, and never lose hope, something that is particularly important given our present challenges and trying times. I would add one additional word to Churchill's list, and that is gratitude. I'm sure that you are each thankful and grateful for the opportunity to serve as an elected official in our great state. And I am very grateful that you have chosen to serve your communities. God bless each of you, and again, congratulations on your elections.
Hello. For those of you who don't know me, I am Joanne Iring, the Town of Brookfield judge, and I am Rick's sister. I couldn't be more proud, standing here today after swearing in my brother as mayor for the city of Muskego. Rick has literally dedicated his 22 years of his life to the betterment of this community, of serving or volunteering on various boards and committees, one of those being the president of the school board. And under his direction helped Muskego Norway School District become one of the best school districts in the state. So for our family, it just seemed to be a natural progression that he would now be mayor of this fine community. I look forward to watching him lead this community into the future. You make me proud. Love you, little brother.
Comments from outgoing officials, but before we do that, I do want to thank both Justice Bradley and my sister Joanne for coming here today. I know traveling about the area in these times is challenging. And once you get in, I guess all our daily routines have been thrown out the window, but it takes special effort to make things like this work. And from the bottom of my heart, I really do appreciate both you coming out and supporting us today. So moving on to comments from outgoing officials. Kathy Chevradie, would you like to go first?
I'm going to start on this side, so first I can... Is it on?
Should be good.
Oh. Congratulations, Rick Petfalski, as elected mayor. So I congratulate you, and I got to turn around. Congratulations, John Terrence, I believe that's you. So congratulations to you for your first time in office. I'm John Engelhardt. Congrats to you. And I'm missing Rob Wolf. Congratulations. What? I had not done yet. There was one more alderman. And then I would like to congratulate Shelley Grogan for her election. Smith, which I understand two of you go by, so congrats to all. I also want to take this opportunity and thank you, Judge Barrigan, for the 18 years of service, double what I did. And I thought nine years was a long time. So thanks to you. And then thank you, Neil. 16 years, am I correct? 16, that's a long time as well. So and truthfully, I never thought I would even do nine years. So I'm grateful for the opportunity that the community trusted in me and gave me the opportunity to serve along with the council scattered around the room. So many things that we did, like accomplishing Janesville Road, which is kind of the shining star in the community, that I know people call me to this day thanking us for that. We implemented a lot of the efficiencies, got a new police station. Of course, this building led to that police station, which was sorely needed, as many of you know. And we did all these many things without raising the taxes. I'm proud to do that. And I want to also say that I feel I was always honest. I know a lot of people told me that because they didn't always get what they wanted. But I was honest. You can't give everybody everything. And we're here to serve and follow the rules and provide the services that the council and the city are required to provide to the community. And so I'm glad to have done that. I also have to thank my husband, Clark Chevradie, who, maybe he was okay with it, though. Gave it my... Allowed me to spend all those evenings at all the city meetings, weekends away for other commitments as mayor. So I'm grateful to him and the kids also as well. And a little-known secret is, no pressure, Rick Petfalski, but I went nine years not missing one single council meeting. I was afraid I was going to get sick somewhere along the line, but I didn't. And I'm happy to have done it, and my husband helped with that. We planned every vacation, everything around that. And when I got towards the end, I thought, I can't miss. So I was hoping nothing would happen, and it didn't. So I took the commitment seriously. And with that, I thank all of you. I thank everyone in the community who gave me the opportunity. And I wish everyone continued success for the city and maintaining all the quality services. And my goodness, the fabulous employees, because I say this all the time. We, as elected officials, we create the policy, and then the staff carries that out. And they carry it out with such meaning. They care about the community. They treat them with such respect. And so to them, I say thank you. I'll miss working with them. Thanks.
So Mayor Petfalski, congratulations. Congratulations to all the individuals who were elected and have chosen to serve the city here. It's, again, I echo what Justice Bradley said, and that is, it's a great, it's a great service that you do for your community to do these things. Nobody does it to get rich, that's for sure. And to put yourself out there, as you said, to do this is a wonderful thing. It was 18 years ago that I first stood in front of this council and took the oath of office as municipal judge. And a lot has happened since that. My kids have gone from being middle schoolers to where now I'm a grandfather. My oldest daughter presented us with our first grandchild six weeks ago. So things have certainly changed, both for us personally and have changed in the city, as you see, as it's grown. This beautiful building here, the developments that have happened around the city, things have really changed. I've been through, in these last 18 years as municipal judge, I've served with five different mayors, Mayor Chevradie being the last one that I served with. And so you've seen a lot of things that have changed, and the court has changed as well. We've gone from primarily, you know, a paper organization to primarily digital. We do still have some paper, but we primarily digital with updates to our court operating system that allow us to have electronic contact with the state agencies like the DMV and that sort of thing. It also allows us to be more efficient in collecting our outstanding forfeitures. We use the state debt collection service to do that. And as a result of that, we've really increased our collection in the last few years. I'm proud of that, but mostly I'm proud of the services the court renders to this city. I've always tried to make sure that everyone who comes before me is treated fairly and feels as if they've been respected when they came in here. Because, as you know, most people, it's likely that when they come into municipal court, it's the only time that they'll actually have direct contact with the justice system. And what I always strove to do, and I hope I was successful, was to make sure that when people came in before me, that they felt that they were heard and had a fair shake. Of course, I've had a lot of help these past years. For the first 10 years, I had the help of a wonderful clerk, Deb Kujawa. Some of you, the people who've been around for a while, remember Deb. She was clerk for about 25 or 30 years, the last 10 years with my first years. And she really trained me and broke me into it. Since then, I've had more help from Susan Hutchison, who's sitting right here in the back here, and who will ably help Judge Grogan here as well. She's one of the hardest-working employees for the city of Muskego. And she's going to do a wonderful job as she continues. I also had the help of two other clerks who worked for me in these past 18 years. Emily Herda and Leslie Care also poured their heart and soul into helping the city. I've worked with only two prosecutors, Rick Trindle, who for many years was our contract prosecutor, and of course, with Jeff Virchell now back here. And both of them made my job so much easier because of their professionalism and the way they handled things. I can't say enough about what it was like working with them. So let me just close by saying that I thank, again, as I said, each of all of you, mayor, the aldermen, Judge Grogan, for doing that call to service. Because municipal service, working as an alderman or as a judge or the mayor, is really where democracy hits the road, I think. Because the things that you do are the things that affect people most directly. And it's not to say that things that state officials do or that federal officials don't affect us. But when you're an alderman, you know that you've got to, if you make a decision, you're going to have to look your constituents in the eye at the grocery store the next day. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for doing such a wonderful job. And I now turn over that gavel, that mythical gavel that's set up here and where the mayor is sitting right now. I have to admit, I've never actually used it. But I turn it over to you, Judge Grogan. I know you're going to do a wonderful job. I know the city's going to be very proud of you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Moving on to comments from newly elected officials, I guess. Oh, I'm sorry. Neil, did you want to speak? I'm sorry. I apologize.
Got to, got to. Been laying flooring for two days, so I'm a little shaken here. I appreciate you taking time tonight to let me speak and to thank me for my service. For the most part, I have enjoyed the 16 years I've been here. And I want to thank all of you for your service. Little did I know, in December of 2003, that my service to the people of the 3rd district would be for 16 years. At that time, several friends asked me to be, to run for alderman against a man who later became mayor. When I was told, when I told my wife about their request, she told me she would immediately divorce me. Interestingly, several of those aldermen on that council went on to be school board members. I wonder who? I don't know how many aldermen I have served under, five mayors, but I don't know how many aldermen. But during a recent budget debate, our budget meeting this year, we reviewed a resolution from 2011. I was the only active person still on the council. I've heard it said that if one member of the family is in politics, the whole family is. Our family is no exception. For the last 16 years, my wife has planned menus and mealtimes around the city calendar. I would like to thank her for all the meals, phone calls, and secretarial work that she has done for me. In fact, the council owes her a big thank you. She knows that I get grouchy when I'm not fed. And she made sure before every meeting I was fed, or I would have been even grouchier. As most of you realize, being an alderman is a thankless job. That changed when I announced I would become a candidate, I would not be a candidate in 2020. Numerous people did come up to me and thanked me for my service, both personally and by email. The best thing, best thank you I got was on the night of the mayoral debate. A man who was in my district told me he had always viewed me as an honest man. That did my heart good. Another person who is no longer with the city remarked that during one, that I had taken a highly ethical position during a discussion and approach and a vote which we had. After 16 years in politics, if you can be viewed as honest and ethical, I think you're doing pretty good. In closing, I'd like to repeat the story that I used on the night that I announced that I would no longer seek another term. General George Mathis was asked about his leadership style. He said it came from a biography of George Washington, which he had read. George Washington reportedly that and said, "In order to be a leader, you have to not only listen with your ears, but you have to also listen with your heart." To my successor and fellow council members, I say, "Listen, and listen with your heart."
Before moving on, I guess I do want to thank the three outgoing officials. Kathy, you know, you can't walk through this community and say you didn't leave an impact here. Both figuratively, I mean, you walked through, like you mentioned, Janesville Road, this building. You've made your impact here that people will remember your legacy for a long time. And thank you for your years of service, not only as mayor, but before that, serving the chamber as an alderman before that, as a county supervisor. You know, you can be proud of the work that you've done. It's going to go on forever. Neil, you know, you've always been the one, like you said, you stuck with your beliefs. You weren't afraid to dig in. And often, you know, you changed a lot of minds along the way. You know, your constituents, time after time, came to support you, and that says a lot. You know, you didn't have the joy of, like so many officials, local officials do, of running unopposed year after year. You had a battle all the time, and you came up, and there was no beating Neil. So your constituents loved what you were doing up here, so thank you. Judge Barrigan, I remember serving with you when I was an alderman years ago and working on, it never came to fruition, but we worked a lot on that teen court. And you could tell back then that you weren't in this just to become a judge. You were in this to serve your community. And thank you very much. So to all three of you, be proud of the work you've done. It hasn't gone unnoticed. So now moving on to comments from newly elected officials, and I guess I'm one of them, so I will start. First off, I want to thank my wife, Diane. I wouldn't be here without her support. Actually, I wouldn't be here at all, except she's the one that actually pushed me into running, and which was unlikely because all those years of all those meetings and everything. And we really thought we were done. So thank you for all your support over the years. So um, uh, thank you for all your support over the years. Thank you, Kristen, my biggest cheerleader out there, um, my biggest campaign supporter. Um, she, she uh, you know, lived and died for all this and uh, I, I couldn't be more proud of you. My son David, um, hasn't been around much for the campaign, but I knew I had his support all the way along. Um, my brother Mike's in the audience here. Um, we met my sister Joanne earlier. Um, my sister Christine um was, came to every event as well. So you can't do this without family behind you and uh, I had that in spades. Um, I want to thank the community for allowing me to, to be here. Um, the support I had was unbelievable. Um, as many of you know, it, 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 once you become elected official, it gives a whole new meaning to go and grocery shopping at Pick and Save. There's no, there's no quick trips anymore. You're, you're, as you're walking through, you, you know, you're, you're stopped by people, um, you know, so running and get a quick loaf of bread doesn't exist anymore, but I love that part. That's what I love about Mesquite. Um, I described it during the mayoral uh campaign and I've said it uh numerous times that Mesquite is um, it's small enough where you can know everyone, but big enough you don't have to. And, and I, I think that, that bodes well for, for our community. Um, I'm, I'm, it, it, Mesquite, I, I've been a cheerleader for this community for, since the day I moved out here. I fell in love with it. It was uh, wasn't our first home, it was our second, but um, it's pretty much the only ch- home that our children has, have known. Um, it, it's such a great community and I'm so proud to be able to serve as its, as its mayor. Cause my goals, my goals are always to put the citizens first, be transparent and have open communication. Um, this, this, this city, you know, we, we're, we're going to be a participant in this, in this great community. We are already, but um, you know, as far as communication goes and everything, um, I, I just, you know, we're, we're going to celebrate everything we do here. Cause there's lots of celebrations in this building. It's filled with hardworking uh individuals and while they don't all live here, their hearts are all here. They, they work hard. Um, I, I sat down last week and met with a lot of the department heads, uh, just to find out what's going on, how they're surviving this, this whole ordeal we're going through right now. And it's amazing and uh how dedicated they are to their jobs in this community. And uh, many of them don't live here, but they consider this, you know, they consider this like home. So we're blessed as a community to have such a dedicated staff. Um, I'm looking forward to, you know, having Mesquite um open for business and I'm not just talking, uh, I'm talking about city hall, talking about our businesses. Um, you know, we're, we're a strong community. Um, Mesquite was strong, I think someone might have coined that. Um, but um, you know, I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking forward to us getting through this. Um, and we're rallying so well right now, but I, I can't wait till the doors are open. Um, and uh, getting, getting on with uh what makes us such a great community. Um, I, I guess um, in, in closing, I'm just going to say I look, Mesquite, I look forward to serving you and uh, you know, we're not, we're not afraid to tell people when they're doing wrong and, and don't start, don't stop now. Um, if I'm not doing something right, I, I expect to hear from everyone. So that's it. Next comment would be from newly elected Judge Shelley Grogan. Congratulations, by the way.
It is a true honor to serve this community. I love Mesquite. It's been my home for almost 30 years. Mesquite is filled with caring, smart, kind and wonderful people. And this is evident from the Neighbors in Need Facebook page. It's a page where people can ask for help and other people fill those needs. And on that page, hundreds of homemade face masks were sewn and provided to those who needed one free of charge. Someone is always posting which store currently has toilet paper in stock. And uh, one mom on that page asked if anyone knew where she could find Tyson chicken nuggets, dinosaurs, because she has a son who has autism and that was the only food that he eats. A short time later, bags and bags of dinosaur nuggets found their way to this mom's freezer, including from one mom who pulled her own bag of dinosaur nuggets out of her own freezer to share. We also have amazing police, firefighters and EMTs who are busy last month doing birthday parades to uh celebrate the birthdays of those who can't leave their homes uh during this last month. And last Sunday, a fire truck led one local pastor's prayer procession all around Mesquite to bring Jesus to the people. We have an incredible community. Mesquite is strong, some would say. So tonight I'd just like to say some thank yous. Thank you to God. I see that this was your plan for me and I am very grateful. Thank you to Justice Bradley, my friend, my mentor, my inspiration. I see you working tirelessly, day and night, to honor the constitution and to get the law right, all while making time to help so many others with your kindness and generosity. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. Thank you to my family and friends and neighbors for their love and support and for those who helped get hundreds of nomination signatures a few days last December, not so warm days. And to Preferred Fitness, my friends there and the owners who are struggling to survive with the shutdown, thank you for your support and encouragement. Thank you, thank you to all of you who are here tonight and to all the people in city hall who have helped me through this process. To Mayor Kathy, Mayor Rick and Police, Police Chief Rens. To Barb, Kim, Sharon, Jill, Carrie and Jenny and all the alderpersons for your help. And I'd like to say a very extra special thank you to my clerk Susan, Judge Patrick Barrigan and City Attorney Jeff Wurchell. The three of you have taught me so much over the past several months and you've shared so much of your knowledge. I certainly have big shoes to fill. Finally, I need to thank all the voters of this great city, some of whom were my high school senior basketball players, voting for the very first time in their very first election. So thank you players from the St. Leonard Blazers team and thank you players from the CMH Mountain Goats team. And a special thank you to the poll workers who worked doubly hard in this election so that people could exercise their constitutional right to vote safely. I know that if we were not all under quarantine, this room would be filled with my family, friends, neighbors, with my football, basketball, volleyball and track athletes and their families. But for now, please know that I am honored to serve you and this community as your municipal judge.
First District Alderman Rob Wolf. Congratulations on your reelection.
Well, first of all, I don't have a big prepared speech like everybody else out here. I've reelected again, which I'm totally grateful for. I heard a lot of great comments from everybody. I definitely appreciate them. I, I agree with them. Uh, I'm not going to repeat them, so I'll keep this sweet and short. Uh, I want to congratulate everybody that's been reelected. John, newly elected, uh, another John, as well as Rick, outgoing mayor, Kathy who uh served the community well for many years. Judge Barrigan on the way out as well. I appreciate that. And Neil, all the great service you did. And not to forget the newly elected Judge Grogan as well. So first of all, um, I, I definitely want to thank my family uh for all their support for all the years, especially my wife, who's here with me tonight. Uh, and of course I have to thank all the voters, uh, you know, uh, coming out, uh, voting. I, hopefully uh, people made it out on voting day as well as early voting. Uh, but uh, I, I definitely appreciate all the votes and all the support for the years. I will uh do as, as Neil mentioned, honest and with your heart. I've always done that uh, as, as a council member. Um, I listen to the people and I, I, I respect them and I, I honor their wishes as, as much as possible. And uh, I will continue to be a honest, heartfelt alderman.
District Three Alderman John Terrence.
I would just like to thank um Alderman Wolf for keeping it short because I'm going to as well, so I'm not the first one to keep it short and sweet. Quick little story, I had a, a phone call the other day and uh my voicemail was Chief Rens. And my first thought was, okay, my kid's at home, nobody snuck out, my house isn't burning down. Um, and I called him back and I, I told him I was a little concerned that he was on my voicemail and he laughed and he says he gets that a lot. And uh, he just mentioned he was updating uh the emergency contact list for the city. So uh, a little shift in, in where the world is that the uh, police chief calls you and it's not related to your kids being in trouble. So my kids are usually pretty well behaved, but um, I just want to take a moment to uh thank a few people, uh, just share a little bit about um my promises for, for our district. First off, I want to thank um, uh, my wife and our family uh for supporting me, uh, for helping put out signs, bring signs back in, um, allowing me to sneak out and um have meetings and phone calls and um that kind of cut into family time a little bit. I know there's more to come of that, so I appreciate their support through all of this. To the friends and neighbors who encouraged me to run and supported me, you know who you are. I can't list you all by name, it would uh take too long. Uh, some of you are in this room, some of you are watching from home, um, below, some of you have texted saying please wave. Um, so I thank you to um, to those who helped my campaign, uh, as small as it was. I had a question this evening, how did you campaign without um really the contact and a lot of social media, a lot of phone calls, a lot of networking done uh without face-to-face contact? It's, it's hard to build trust when you don't get to meet people face-to-face, but uh we did our best and um, thank you to those who helped with that. To Neil, for your years of service to the district, uh, we appreciate it. It may be a thankless job, but thank you very much for um, from those of us that live in the district for your time. We appreciate it. And to the voters of the district that trusted me to represent them, uh, that's what I'm here doing. Uh, this isn't about me, it's about them and about uh best representing what they want. Uh, so for me, I just wanted to share that uh my promise is to do my best to serve the district, to be accessible to the residents. That was something that I uh was big on, that uh if there's an issue that I can be reached. To be transparent about the decision-making process and to work hard for what's best for our city. Um, a last special thanks to uh God for all the blessings that he gives to our family and uh where he's brought us to this day. So uh, my last comment is I'm excited um to get to work. For the alderman on the, the board, I ask for your grace as I learn the process. Um, I promise to be humble through it all and um allow me those first few months to make mistakes, say stupid things and ask dumb questions. So um, thank you so much.
District Five Alderman John Engelhardt.
All right, I'd like to uh do like others and just uh show my appreciation and thanks for those of District Five that gave me the vote. Having been in office a few years now, it's uh a pleasure to serve. Also to my wife and family that have gave me support um for another term. It's a good thing. Uh, I also want to congratulate uh those who have uh been elected with me at this time and uh really want to show appreciation for all the hard work that you all represent. As well as Mayor Chevronati, thank you for uh all that you've done for our city and uh my opportunity to serve with you. Uh, also to our other retiring uh Judge Barrigan, uh haven't had a lot of contact with you over the years, but uh I know you've done your job well. And uh Neil Bardman, started out uh not knowing Neil very well, but uh we're pretty good friends nowadays, so that's interesting. Uh, we had a chance to get to know each other through this venue. It's been good. And I want to welcome uh Mayor Petfelsky as our new mayor and uh look forward to working with you. So uh, we'll do our best. Judge Grogan also now, uh appreciate you and uh little contact we've had so far, but you're a great person. Appreciate you. Alderman Wolf, reelected, uh, we've gotten to be friends over the years too. So this is a good thing. And I look forward to friendship as well as working with our newly elected uh from District Three, John Terrence. About 32 years ago, almost 32 years ago, I came to Mesquite. And um, it was an interesting thing because um I came here with a different vision and a different purpose than uh what I serve a lot today. I came here to establish a new uh church work and uh I was successful in doing that. Uh, establishing and serving as pastor for 30 years at Mesquite Apostolic Tabernacle. Uh, coming into a community where you knew, virtually no one and uh getting to know people and working with it, I immediately uh went to the mayor's office and uh sat down, had a chat with the mayor. I joined the Chamber of Commerce, I tried to become a part of this community. That was adoptive community for me. I've lived in some other communities before and uh now having been here 32 years, it's uh half of my adult life has been spent here. So uh, this has been a great community for me. I really love Mesquite and I really want to uh serve Mesquite with the best of my ability. Uh, this has been a great thing to uh experience along the way because becoming involved in the community, I found there was a lot more to do than just uh establish a church and be a part of a church. Uh, I became involved in various committees uh with the school district uh at a time, although I was never deep into the schoolwork. Uh, I served on committees and worked with the each chamber over the years and enjoyed that. And then uh, the day came when uh I had opportunity and uh chose to run for office. I lost my first vote uh for office and uh that was uh typical to me. I never was really elected to anything all through my life. I go all the way back to school elections and things like that and I was always on the short end. So winning election was something I was not used to doing. But I came back and gave it a second try and that time I, I was uh confirmed to become a councilman. So uh, transition, uh, can a one who serves in the area of church work also be serving in the, in the city? Really, I see the two fit together a whole lot. And we work uh for the purpose of our community because uh we're in the people business and serving people is my desire and my heart. I've always tried to help people, I always want to help people and I will continue to do that to the best of my ability. With that, I want to say that I appreciate the people, especially of District Five and uh invite them to call me at any time, uh, day or night, but preferably daytime. And uh allow them to express their views and uh their goals and hopes for our city. And I want to work together in bringing those things to the council as well as working with the normal business that we all experience in the council. It's really a great uh experience so far and I look forward to that experience continuing on its very highest level uh as we go into this next term. I really appreciate our city, I really appreciate the people I work with and I'll, I'll try to do my best in this job.
Next item on the agenda is a certificate of appreciation for uh Mayor Kathy Chevronati. With all the work you've done in this community, there's really not much that we could do to, that would justify what you've done, but we do have a small plaque here for you and a sign of appreciation, so I'd like to present that to you. And we have a certificate of appreciation for Judge Patrick Barrigan as well. All right, moving on, with the agenda, the next item is the election of council president.
So they need some, they need the ballots.
Yeah, so were they handed out already or are they?
No, cause I didn't know where anybody was going to sit.
So we're going to hand out nomination ballots to start?
Um, it's everything.
Okay, so you're going to get an envelope with your, with nomination and the regular ballots. Um, the first, the first go around will be to nominate for your council president and the two top vote getters will then be um, um, then your opportunity to vote for those two top vote getters. Um, they'll bring this around to you if you guys want. You guys are bunching up too much distance. So which one are we using for, are they the same color for both nominations?
Yeah, yeah. They're marked.
Does everyone have their, Tom needs his yet? So as I stated, the first ballot will be for nomination purposes. The top two vote-getters from that will then be, one of the two will be selected as a council president by a simple majority. Jeff will go around and collect the ballots. Are yours?
Yep. Jeff has, okay.
So the two, the two top nominations were for Kevin and Rob Wolf. So Kevin Kabaki and Rob Wolf. So from those two choices, elect your council president, please.
No.
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 Don't need any initials, but I didn't even do.
On the, on the, we won't do, worry about this.
Oh, for the lake, yeah. Congratulations. So their next round of balloting will be for your council representative on the Plan Commission. Little explanation, so the ordinance was changed last year to match state statute, so it's actually an appointment by the mayor. However, this year, I'm going to let you, I'm going to have you guys vote on it, and whoever you select is who I'm going to appoint, so. Yeah, so the first round is a nomination for that.
Exactly.
Just like the last round. All right, so, based on that, my appointment to the common council is Kevin Kabaki. Congratulations. Moving on to the election of council representative to the Little Muskego Lake Protection and Rehab District. Sure.
Use the microphone.
Use the microphone, please. Because I'm sure all the people around the lake are watching.
I've had that opportunity, and have been privileged to serve in that. I would be delighted to go ahead, but if there's another selection, that's okay with me, too. So I just want to let you know, I'm open to it.
This one does require your initials on the ballot.
On the voting ballot.
Yeah, but the, on the ballot only, not the nominations, so. Right. So Alderman Terrence and Alderman Engelhardt has been, are the two nominations, so if you can make your selections from there. This one requires your initials. The ones without the initials, I guess. Congratulations. City officials reports. I'm assuming we have nothing. Communications and miscellaneous business by, authorized by law. Future agenda items. Could I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, we do.
Can, you want to come up, maybe? Please.
Future consideration for a call meeting. I'd like us to get together and talk about the status of the budget.
Okay. Like an update where we're at right now, year-to-date, or what would you like to know more specifically?
You could do it. I just, I don't want to put the staff to a lot of work. Just a quick update is fine, whatever they got. I want to have a discussion with Alderman and yourself as well, on where the future's going, and what's, you know, where we've been, and stuff like that. So, just, just because of the economy right now, we should at least get, get some ideas, start getting some ideas together for the budget.
Okay. Anything else?
New guy has a couple questions.
Sure.
That's all right.
He's your microphone, though. Okay, one of them.
First question will be, the contingency possibility for the need for remote voting as a board at some point, has that ever been addressed? I realize we're sort of at the height of an epidemic. If that were to take out two or three of the members where they were quarantined, do we have something in place where there's the ability to do business in some sort of special way remotely?
Okay. And I can have Jeff follow up with you via email?
Okay, great.
Yeah, and you're asking this to be on a future meeting?
Yeah, I just, I guess it is a question if there's not something in place, that maybe we add it to a future meeting to discuss, just a contingency plan for that.
Okay.
It's the IT guy in me that says, hey, we need to have some sort of technology in place to.
Anything else?
Again, questions from the new guy. I was looking at when meetings were posted, when the agenda was up. I was chatting with a former alderman who's a friend, and it looks like the agenda's hit Friday, and the meeting is Tuesday. Is that correct?
Right.
Has there ever been a discussion to potentially try and get those out sooner?
The question came up this week, so we'll discuss it with staff and see if it's possible, but there is a lot of work that has to be done, and it's difficult.
I get it. My thought would be giving the team here the appropriate time to do our due diligence to kind of make the phone calls, do the research that I would think all of us would put in. So that's sort of my, and I have a couple other questions. I'll chat with you afterwards.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Is that the one at Cal meeting?
The, which one? The coming, well, let me, yeah, I guess we can, we can report back. We'll report back at a call. It's more of trying to figure out if it works through staff, so.
That's really a staff question.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
So.
I can't hear you, John.
Again, yeah, but.
Not if it's Cal.
Yeah. Sure. Right. It's not agenda, so we can just get back to you guys on that. Okay. Could I get a motion to adjourn? Holes in favor, say aye. Opposed? We're adjourned at 7:05.
It's your first meeting. Congratulations.